Good evening. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for your patience. We had a budget workshop from 5 to just about 10 minutes ago, so we're starting this meeting at quarter to 8:00. Thanks for your patience. And may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosca?
Here.
Councilmember Riddick?
Here.
Councilmember Riddick?
Here. And would you please all join me in rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation tonight, but it is one that I'll send off to the Silicon Valley Bike Network, and this is in honor of Bike to Work Day, which is coming up this Thursday. Try to ride your bike to school, or to shop, or to the farmer's market on the weekend, that'll count. All over the Bay Area, people are commemorating and honoring Bike to Work Day, trying to find new ways to get to their job, or their place, or their school. And this year, we're happy to say that the Half Moon Bay Review is sponsoring an Energizer station over by Surfers Beach. So if you're riding your bike from the north, or even through the south, stop by at Half Moon Bay Review's Energizer station. All right, and I will ride my bike to City Hall that day. And next, we have some exciting news from Elizabeth Shuck, who is the Vice Superintendent of Cabrillo Unified School District. The school district's just received this wonderful new grant called "The Big Lift." This is incredible to support reading for kids. So every kid in this county can read when they get to the 3rd grade, at least. This has been a big project that Supervisor Carol Groom had initiated and worked on. Elizabeth, tell us the great news.
I'm really happy to be here, and first of all, I'd like to say it's great to see some familiar faces, my fellow citizens in Half Moon Bay and on the coast. And I want to thank our council members for their commitment and their service to our community. You have just made a very large group of people happy to support our library, and I'm really happy I'm here on this same day, because the library, as you have, have been supporting us in our literacy efforts. It's also the day of the teacher, and it's a great day to be able to share news with you that through the work with our co-lead partners, the Cabrillo Education Foundation and the Coastside Children's Program, the Cabrillo Unified School District has just received a three-year grant totaling $600,000 a year to provide new preschool spaces for students, children in our community. I don't know if you're familiar with this, but we still have, in 2015, about 40 children that come into kindergarten every year that have had no preschool experience whatsoever. Not limited preschool, but no preschool experience whatsoever. Through this new grant, we are able to, at the Los Listos Migrant Program, which is on the school district campus, through Coastside Children's Program, and through the Institute for Human and Social Development, which is the Head Start Program here on the coast, we are able to add 30 new spaces, partial day and full day spaces, and another 66 enhanced spaces for the children to participate in preschool. This grant is the first of its kind, having been given to only four communities across San Mateo County. It was an extremely competitive grant. It's coming from not only Silicon Valley Community Foundation, but also the Social Innovation Fund in Washington, DC. And as our mayor mentioned, the Board of Supervisors has been very supportive. I'm just making sure that our community knows what great things are happening for our children. And I've already done a radio interview with Jim Holly, who happens to be here in the audience this evening. We've had a press release out, we've had several articles in the paper, and there's information on this grant on the district website. So I just wanted to share the great news, and thank you for always supporting education in our community, and happy to share with my fellow citizens in town.
Thank you. Congratulations, $600,000 for three years. You did a lot of work in that grant. Congratulations.
Thanks.
And is Yamalat Caballero here?
Can I speak to her?
I will. We can speak in council reports.
Yeah.
She's not here this evening, so Rick and I will talk about this. This kind of goes to education and a great youth in our community. So any announcements of events coming up this weekend?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Boys and Girls.
Thursday, Boys and Girls Club Dinner, yes. Is all council going to be able to make it?
Didn't get in.
Yeah?
She didn't.
All right, we'll figure that one out. Boys and Girls Club, talk to Councilmember Riddick after the meeting, send her a message. Any other events? I know last weekend it was jammed with events all over the place. So we didn't have a closed session this evening, so we'll go directly to City Council Reports, and I'll start my left this time. Councilmember Riddick.
We've had a couple of sewer authority MidCoast side meetings, one extra meeting because we're desperately trying to find an interim general manager. And we've had not so much luck so far, so we're going to continue to pursue finding candidates for that. I did attend the Cinco de Mayo event up at the Johnson House, which was absolutely wonderful. Thank you, Magda, for the translations and for the wonderful musical events and good attendance, especially by the City Council. That was great. I did attend the Association of Bay Area Governments meeting on behalf of the council. There was not a quorum of City Council members to vote, so we're going to be doing that by phone next Thursday. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Had the opportunity to meet with the Coastside Land Trust and a few board members, and had a great discussion for a couple hours, a little bit about the history, a little bit of dispelling rumors, and hopefully we'll continue to have a dialogue. I think they were interested in meeting with all the council members at some time. The other one I want to just briefly mention is I had the privilege to meet with the Administrator of Region 9, US EPA. We talked about mid pen and open space this last week at Rancho San Antonio down in Cupertino. We had a settlement agreement through the Water Board and US EPA with Lehigh Quarry, Permanente Creek, and it was a huge issue, but that was a wonderful conclusion to some pollution issues that we've worked on for years. But let me tell you, the people at that complex down there, the mid pen, open space, you could complain all you want about open space, but there was hundreds of people. We had VIP parking, thank God, because there is nowhere to park, but those people used that open space district, and I think it's so valuable, like all of us are big supporters of open space. And as the rest of you, we all went through our Concert of the Park. Then we had our Taste of the Coast with the seniors, and just pretty active there. And then last night, was asked to attend a closed session with the Sewer Authority MidCoast, so you could tell where we've been the last three or four days, so we've been all active. Thank you.
And you had Flower Market open.
Farmer's Market.
Farmer's Market.
Saturday, thank you, yeah, the first Farmer's Market, and then tomorrow, we start in Pacifica. Pacifica starts tomorrow, Wednesday. It's a great market, from 2:00 to 7:00. They're wonderful companions of ours on the coast side, and so we'll have to hopefully get out of here before 11:30 tonight, so we could get the truck ready for tomorrow. So Pacifica, here we come. Thank you.
Councilmember Penrose.
One more thing, I apologize. You know, quickly, as public officials, as you well know, we get a little bit of abuse, but that's part of the job. But guess what? We got a thank you note for compost, for Earth Day. Thank you for a wonderful compost giveaway and the information booths, and so staff did a great job. And you know what? When you get a thank you note for compost, that's pretty darn good. So we appreciate it, folks.
That's true. Thank you. Councilmember Penrose.
Yeah, I also went to Earth Day, and I got a half a trash can full of compost, so now I've got to get home and plant something. That's a big problem. I went to the Sonrisas Benefit and had samplings of three different paella dishes, made for the benefit of Sonrisas, and at Tok Bonk last week, and that was just delightful. Great crowd. I guess the third thing I did was I attended the Coastside Emergency Action Plan Meeting, and found out where we're going to be. Jim Holly is going to be starting a Red Cross Shelter Training, so if anybody's interested in shelter training for in case of disaster. There's also a disaster prep day at the San Mateo County Event Center, where we'll have cert team booths and fire and emergency equipment, all there, displaying what we can do in the case of an emergency. That's going to be June the 6th. That's it.
Vice Mayor Kowchik.
So a few things to point out. I think what you see is the activity of the council in the community is pretty substantial. It goes well beyond attending a couple of City Council meetings. And then I just want to acknowledge that. I think it's a lot of effort to engage and work with the community, to represent the community, and that's part of the privilege. So Councilmember Riddick mentioned the Sewer Authority MidCoast. There were two meetings for Sewer Authority, and for the two people in Half Moon Bay that watched that very closely, we are working very actively to recruit a new interim general manager and a new full-time general manager. And last night, we put in place a mechanism for how to operate until we get them in place. So we're being prudent with that. And then the budget for the Sewer Authority is going to come to City Council, I think, in our first June meeting. I attended an event in College of San Mateo with an organization called Thrive, and Thrive helps connect different nonprofits. And it was really a nonprofit fair. They were recruiting for boards, but they're also helping nonprofits connect and collaborate with one another. And had some discussions with the executive director of Thrive, and there's interest in having something like that on the coast, if only to help us all have another opportunity to interact and find ways to collaborate and support one another. I also was able to make some connections that I can potentially bring back to Half Moon Bay with Peninsula Conflict Resolution and Star Vista and some other organizations. So I was very happy with that. I was thrilled and had a great time with Concert in the Park, Cinco de Mayo style. Best part was clearly the pinata. I thought that went over. No, I'm teasing, because I brought it. But it was really great. But particularly the children performed, our local children performed and did a fabulous job. It was really a great event. I went, attended two programs at the library, and I'm going to go back. It was absolutely wonderful. I went to bilingual storytime, and there were all kinds of little kids, and you see a couple of two-year-olds in their pajamas listening to a story, and you're just like, oh. But I went home, my wife said there's going to be no more children, so. But it was really great to see that. It was a full house. It was a full house, and there was all kinds of families there, all different backgrounds, and it was very active. And at the same time, I got introduced to the Toyota Family Learning Program that was also going on that day. And this is a program that they operate out of the library. They received a three-year grant of $175,000 to create opportunities for family learning. And this day, they were doing a project where they would give some raw materials to families, and then the children and the parents would do the project together, and they made different tables and different items. And just another way our library is just so much more than a library. Library is such a bad word. We need a better library word, because at this time, it was, you know, storytime and family time and project time and adult learning time, and it was really fantastic. And then Marina, I mentioned Yamalat Caballero, and she was not able to be here tonight. But at the last meeting, I mentioned we went to a seminar in Monterey called the Progress Seminar, where, again, another opportunity to collaborate with other nonprofits and other elected officials. And somebody from the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, I think it's called, were bragging to us about this great thing they're bringing to the county, and how they could create an opportunity for middle school girls to meet some 100 female executives, and to encourage them to study science, technology, engineering, and math. And I said, "That's great, but I don't really care unless you can open the door for one of my kids in my community." And I was sort of joking, but he knew I wasn't joking. And we're very fortunate that we were able to get one slot. It was a sold-out event, and we got one slot. So one of our young ladies from Half Moon Bay got to attend, escorted by the mayor. And I know you were there, you can speak more about it, but really fantastic that we could bring that here. And I will then now reach back out to the organization. I'd like to see if we can get some more slots. Maybe next year we get five or 10 or something. And the trick, the hook I gave to Yamalat, and Yamalat is an 8th grader at Cunha Middle School, high achiever, bright girl, and the challenge I gave to her is she needs to go to this event, meet Maria Shriver, meet an Olympian, meet these executives, and then come back and talk to the kids at the Boys and Girls Club about her experience. And I was really happy to bring that back. And that's really some of the added benefit when we go out and we work in the community, we go to these other events, is to connect those dots that otherwise we wouldn't have been able to connect. And I feel really blessed that I can bring that back. Thank you.
And I'll start with that one. It was a real privilege. This was a really bright, young scholar athlete at Cunha, which was, she was such a delight. I had explained to her a little bit who Maria Shriver was beyond being married to Arnold Schwarzenegger, but everyone in that room who was over 40 knew who Maria Shriver was. The kids had to be educated. But there were two other people. One, there was Jed York. This was sponsored by the 49ers as well. So I got the privilege of having a conversation with the owner, 49ers, as well as a picture, so I gave him my feelings on the team. But one of the highlights of the day was a young woman named Brenda Villa. She is the most medal-winningest water polo player in the world, outstanding. She came from a poor family. A community built a swimming pool. None of her family knew how to swim, and she would go there, through a Boys and Girls Club, and go swimming. Ended up, she was a water polo player, got good grades so she can get into Stanford. She won competitions at Stanford, ended up in four Olympics, where in the London Olympics, her water polo team won gold. Just a great speaker. The girls just flock to her. So as I was sending pictures, and Yamalat got to ask her a really great question, how you balance sports and being a good athlete. And as I was sending the photo home to Magda, you know her, so through the Boys and Girls Club.
Russell.
And Russell, you know her too?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll get her over here, so that she can speak to the girls too. So it was really, it was an honor for me to be a part of that with all these bright girls, and they were teams of them from schools. We were the only just single group representing Cunha there. Did you want to, Johnson, you wanted to say something?
Maybe Russell.
No. We were just ribbing each other, because Reed knows her as well.
Uh-huh. Great, great. But just quickly through a bunch of things, starting out with Earth Day, I do have to thank staff for all their work, and to all our partners that participated. We had, I think, almost a dozen of them. I'm just going to rattle off a couple. Allied Waste, who obviously supplied the compost. We had the Coastside Land Trust was there with information. Recycle Works, I've been attending Recycle Works Academy, so we brought through all the brochures and opportunities to have energy efficiency, and I'll talk a bit more about that in a minute. Heal, we thank our local Ford dealer who brought this beautiful hybrid electric fusion. Go down and take a look at it. It was plugged in in our charging station. And to Garden Apocathery, Jennifer, who has the business on Main Street, had supplied Little Cactus succulent. So if you haven't gone to that shop, go in there and take a look at it. We're really happy with what she presented. In addition, attended another women's leadership for women who are in elected office. Adrienne Tissier, Carol Groom have started a program to help women of all ages enter politics, get elected. They're developing this group. So as we were all mentored by someone to be brought into this world of politics, we need to bring in other women too, and get them exposed to it. So that was a great meeting. And also, I did attend the Council of Cities in Millbrae, which the presenter talked about Super Bowl 50, which is coming next year. I'm sure you're going to hear more about it, but just put this in the back of your mind. If you have any transportation or go over using the 101 corridor, plan on not being there from about Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, prior to the Sunday of Super Bowl, because that corridor from San Francisco to Santa Clara is just going to be packed with people in rented cars and buses up and down. So plan ahead now. Don't go to work over that side the week, few days before Super Bowl. Dream Machines, I'm glad they had a great day. That's such a wonderful event for the Coastside Adult Day Center. And I also attended a YMCA event, because YMCA is providing summer camp here in partnership with the city and the Boys and Girls Club, but they're also providing swimming lessons too. And they're subsidizing so much of that. They have a donor that's helping with that. So again, you know, you open up some of these sports activities to kids, you just don't know where they'll go. It really can be a bridge to them, as the young lady I'd mentioned earlier. Also, attended a kickoff to an Energy Watch. For those of you who have businesses, you can have an Energy Watch audit into your business. So if you own a business or know someone who does, the audit will address things, and you can have rebates of from 50 to almost 100 percent. There were so many examples where people changed out appliances, lighting, all sorts of things, which would have had a bill of $6,000 or so, they might have paid $200. So you'll be hearing a lot more about that, but definitely, if you have any questions about it, call the city, and we can put you in touch with the right people. And as was mentioned by the Council, the Concert in the Park, can't thank Parks and Rec enough for providing that. And we earlier this evening put more money in the budget, so we can have more of those fun events in town. And lastly, Taste of the Coast for our senior Coastsiders was a wonderful event, and thank you to, it must have been 20 different restaurants in the coast side that provided really great food, and that's a great fundraiser for the seniors. So I know this last weekend was jammed with so much, and I'm just looking out in the audience. Just raise your hand if you attended any of these things in the last week, either worked it or attended it. Raise your hand. Look at that. That's great. Congratulations to you. All right. So that's some of that stuff. Let's get down to the meat of stuff. City Manager, do you have any things you would like to talk about?
Would you like to deal with Councilmember requests before or after?
Thank you.
City Council requests. I'm sorry, I missed that. Scanned over. City Council requests. Do you have anything tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. We'll wait till you come back.
Just wait.
Excellent. City Manager?
Thank you very much. I too just wanted to echo my thanks to the Recreation Committee and to the staff who worked very hard on the concert Sunday, and it was, we do have to stop and celebrate. It was really fun. It was a great event, so that was wonderful. And then I'd like to just ask our Community Development Director to provide a couple of updates on some of the projects that are, we're working on, including MacDutra, Pillar Cidos, and perhaps Seymour as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Dante Hall, Community Development Director for this great city. Just an update on Pillar Cidos Bridge. The project is on schedule and remains within the anticipated budget. As you know, the bids were due actually on the 1st, May 1st. We opened the bids, and in reviewing the proposals, it looks like the bids came in a lot lower even than the in-house estimates, which is very good news. We are looking to evaluate those bids, making sure that the contractor understood everything that was in the bid package. And we hope to, our plan is to come back to council on May 19th to actually award the construction contract. The environmental work is on schedule, and so we're optimistic that we can complete the project within the given timeframe. The other major project is MacDutra. There's a lot of work that's going on. It's on schedule as we plan. The contractor completed most of the underground irrigation utility work, and the city's been coordinating with PG&E about the electrical vaults, and those were delivered today, and they'll be installed tomorrow. The concrete forming and pouring schedule is next week. That'll be followed by installing the pavers and the fountain and other improvements. We've gotten several questions from the public, because, you know, there are some days when there's no activity. And so people have come to us and said, "Hey, what's going on?" That was planned. There are days that there will be no activity, and we've anticipated that, because we're trying to do coordination or scheduling, but we've built that into the schedule. We remain optimistic that the new park should be developed, and we're optimistic that it'll open on July 4th, that in time for that celebration. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Dante. Farmer John has a question.
I'm sure hoping we continue to approve some assistance for you. It's like you're doing a lot of work through the City Manager and staff. Would you inform the public about the work that started today at the corner of Main and Kelly, please? Just a little brief update.
We've gotten a lot of questions from different people who own property or have projects in the downtown. One of the, and we're assuming, or we're attributing that to the project or the park. You know, they see motion, they see things in movement. It's kind of a catalyst for other things happening. There was a project for a retail and office space development to go on the corner, and this is the corner that has the old gas station, and then there's a building next to it. The project has been approved for quite some time, actually in 2008 was the last amendment. They have pulled permits from us, and today, they actually started demolishing the structures. All of the asbestos and other hazardous material was taken out, but they have actually demolished the site, and we remain optimistic that they're going to proceed, actually, with the construction of the approved project. So a lot of activity on Main Street.
Councilmember Penrose. Yes. Dante?
I'm sorry, Dante. Just one question. Is there a schedule for the construction yet? Have they been granted the construction permits?
No, there is no schedule for construction. That's really up to the property owner.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you never know if they're trying to deal with financing, so we leave it up to them. The only requirement is if they pull a permit, it's active for one year, and they have to pull a new permit unless they have some type of activity within that year. So right now, we've just granted permits for the demolition. Once we get permits for the actual construction, we'll provide an update to the City Council.
So the year begins when? Once they pull the construction permit, or once they get the demolition permit?
At the last action. So a year from today.
Today.
If nothing else actually happens.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Thank you for that report, Dante. City Manager, is there anything additional? Otherwise, I will go now to public forum. And just to let everyone know, you do get three minutes, but I know you've waited like over, almost an hour now for us to get to some of these items, so if you were just brief and concise, would be wonderful. So Michelle Sirza, followed by Pam Fisher.
She left.
She left. Yes, thank you. Pam Fisher, followed by Ben Halstead.
Pam Fisher, 659 Highland Avenue, Half Moon Bay. I'm just going to be Harvey Rohrbach right now and read into the record a letter that Harvey wrote to the City Council members. He said, "I intended to speak during public comment at tonight's meeting, but I'm the representative of the Coastside Fire Protection District of the California Special District Association, and must attend their meeting tonight. I hope this message will still be heard by all of you tonight. As a member of AFOG, Advocates for Open Government, I am concerned about the hostile environment at some recent council meetings. When citizens are publicly demonized by council members, it creates an atmosphere where open and transparent dialogue is repressed. That is not good for our democracy. Recently, a council member publicly and falsely accused a citizen in attendance at a council meeting of being a racist. Such ad hominem attacks demean our civility." As another example, during public comment in reference to a member of the public comment in reference to a member of the public, a speaker shouted, 'Mr. Candati, tear down this man.' This seemed to be acceptable behavior, as the diatribe was not responded to in any way by any council member." That was quite a while ago, though. "I would hope that our council does not encourage this disrespect in the future." Thank you, Harvey Rohbeck. Now, I'm here as a representative, he wrote that as a member of AFOG. And there were a number of us that was concerned about an outburst. I just want to read into the record again. Advocates for Open Government is a nonpartisan, nonprofit watchdog organization whose mission is to monitor the actions of our elected public servants, their appointees and employees, to verify compliance with all laws, to ensure their transparency and accountability, and to ensure that all parties doing business with these entities receive equal treatment under the law. Members, we will absolutely not involve ourselves in any inter-council issues that you council members may have with each other. We will not engage ourselves with any issue that you, as council members, might have with members of the public. If this was done, it was not done under AFOG's name. We will not. Our mission is simply to advocate for open, transparent, respectful, and responsive government. That is our goal. And any of you may contact any of us. I know Dante has my contact information. Please feel free to. We are absolutely available. I had a wonderful conversation with Farmer John in his pumpkin patch in the fall, around the time of the election, where he felt people on the other side hated him. I assured him, "I am an advocate that never involves person, never lets politics become personal." We do not hate him, and we made this really clear, I made that personally clear to him. At any rate, thank you. And here's for open two-way communication. Please contact us.
Thank you. It's good to know John is loved here. Ben Halsted?
Followed by Martin Anya.
Good evening, Council. I guess I left the party early last meeting, and there was apparently, after my speak, I, during my speak, I guess I stated that I heard something that was never said, so I apologize. Tonight, you know, kind of the same issue, but I'm going to stick with, you know, what's in print instead of what I may or may not have heard. The same GPAC meeting, last one, you know, I have the summary of that meeting here off the Plant Half Moon Bay. It's the public comment page. I see my public comment here where I talked about zoning change. You know, I'm a Wavecrest lot owner. And after, you know, after my comment here, I guess in italics, I guess it's the city's comment, the city is not currently talking about rezoning land, really. I have a newspaper article here. It's the San Mateo Daily Journal, back in December, five months ago, where city staff is quoted as saying, "West of Highway 1 is something we're definitely looking at to protect. People are loud and clear about that. Things we've had to clear up is people that this land may be vacant, but the underlying zoning is that people are able to build there. They're actually able to build homes on that land. So, what we want to do, if the community wants that open space, let's create open space zoning for that property." Well, we're certainly talking about, you know, rezoning land five months ago. I have the compact core here. Boy, if a picture said 1,000 words, this would be talking about rezoning. So, you know, it's out there. I think it should be out there. I think we should be talking about it. Yes, it's a big issue, but I think it's an issue we can resolve. I, you know, I'd love to bring these property owners, like myself and the city together, to resolve this. I think that we can do it. Sequestering this issue is just, is not productive. It's just going to lead to, you know, these people are just going to lawyer up. And, you know, that's not going to get anybody anywhere. I think we can resolve this. You know, because I get up there and talk in front of the GPAC about these issues, I don't think you should be afraid of that, or anybody should be afraid of that. I'm trying to open up dialogue. I think this can be resolved. So, please, let's, you know, if this is city policy to not talk about it right now, please change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halsted. Martin from Pacific Coast TV, followed by James Wilkinson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and wonderful City Council and your wonderful staff. Marty and I are with Pacific Coast TV. And I just had a couple of very quick updates for you on our summer activities here at PCT. One of them, on May 29th, that's May 29th, Friday of this month, we're going to have our program, PCT Honors. And that's something that every year gives us the opportunity and the personal honor for me of recognizing people throughout our coast side who've done wonderful things. We'll be honoring Joan Weideman of the Pacifica School Board, and then two Half Moon Bay residents that you might know, Julie Girth and Naomi Patric, as well as Cleo Tildy from Pescadero and folks throughout the coast side. So, we do encourage and invite you to come to that if you can. That's May 29th. That's Friday night at 7:00. It'll be held at the Mildew Owen Concert Hall in Pacifica. Second thing, and it brings me a lot of pleasure to announce that we are currently, thanks to my man Nico right here on the camera, has been talking to the folks over at, that's him, yeah. Thanks, Nico. He's, we're talking to the folks at the Boys and Girls Club. And basically, what we're trying to do this summer is greatly increase and enhance our ability to provide coverage, to provide support, and to provide television access to the residents of Half Moon Bay and the coast side. Specifically, what I'm talking about is an expanded studio configuration that will basically turn this room into a television studio, for lack of a better descriptor. And I'm very excited about that because it'll do many things. The first one, obviously, being to provide much enhanced coverage of these meetings, and will be a little bit more, you know, graphic intensive, and it'll enable us some wonderful things. In addition to that, it'll serve the kids that are being served by the Boys and Girls Club and the community at large. They don't have to go to Pacifica in order to do a studio-based program. In addition to that, we're also going to have computers that kids of all ages can check out, from 5 to 95, they can come and check out, and we'll have somebody there to help educate them. So, this is part of our ongoing process of enhancing our commitment. Again, we're not asking for any additional money or any additional contract or anything like that from the city. It's just part and parcel of what we're doing as we've been building our internal infrastructure and trying to upgrade what we're doing here on the coast. So, with that, very excited. Unless you have any questions for me, I just wanted to let you know what we're doing. And again, very excited to report these things.
Great. Thank you, Marty. That was May 29th at 7:00. Thank you. James Wilkinson, followed by TJ Gautier.
Good evening. I'm a resident at Coastside Senior Housing, 925 Main Street. And a couple of issues I want to talk about. One is the need and hopefully installation of crosswalk and possibly stop signs also on Main Street at Poplar. I've seen many occasions there where the southbound bus, which has to stop just on the south, on the northwest corner of Poplar, lets passengers off, and then they have to worry about crossing Main Street with no crosswalk protection at all. And hopefully, that can be resolved just by the simple addition of crosswalks. But I think it'd be much better also include stop signs there. We also have that new development going in right there at that additional area. There are going to be a lot more possible pedestrians crossing that area. The parking space, or I'm sorry, the bus stop is right there at what would be if it were a four-way street. It'd be the, on the east side of Main Street, also at Poplar. There's a bus stop there. And as a result of that, when the bus stops there, it blocks vision, people leaving the driveway at coast side. So, hopefully, something can be done about that. I'm one of a member of eight residents who've gotten together to talk about these issues. We made a presentation to the Citizens Advisory Committee for SAM Trans to do something about that bus stop to alleviate the problem of traffic leaving the parking lot and then having collisions on Main Street. I think there have been at least two there in the last few months because the visibility is so poor when there's a bus stop there. We're advocating to SAM Trans to move that bus stop down the other end of the block where it will resolve a lot of issues. And then, one other point is smoking in bus stops in Half Moon Bay. That particular bus stop, from my window, I can see a lot of people who sit in the shelter smoking cigarettes, and there'd be passengers for the bus who are waiting outside the shelter. I don't know for sure that it's because of the smokers, but it wouldn't surprise me. And I've checked online to see about ordinances preventing smoking in bus stops in California. Found no state law that provided for that, no local ordinance either. So, hopefully, this council can address that issue, perhaps require the posting of non-smoking signs in all of the bus shelters in this area. Speaking to a SAM Trans supervisor, it was his opinion that is illegal to smoke in them, but he doesn't know why there's no signage letting people know about that. Well, I want to thank you very much for allowing me this time, and we'll see you perhaps the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. TJ Gautier, followed by Ellen Wright.
Thank you. TJ Gautier, I live in Moss Beach and am not actually a citizen of the city, but I want to speak on the library funding. And to begin, I guess, by acknowledging and thanking Don Horsley and the supervisors who have committed their half of the funding for the library project, and for committing to fund the staff, as they have in the past, the operating cost of the staff at the library. And then I want to thank the city here for stepping up and providing the support that you are, including the support you did earlier this evening, to continue funding the library and to help get this, make this a reality. I know there's been some controversy about part of the funding, funding for the portion that you don't have the money to just step up and fund upfront, specifically the lease revenue bonds. I know it's been controversial. Some of you may have seen the article that I wrote, an opinion article in the Review a few weeks ago. I'd like to share my perspective on that kind of financing. From my background, I have some background in public finance. I served for five years in the White House. I was named by President Clinton as an Associate Director of the Office of Management and Budget. So, I had the opportunity to manage the budgets of a number of agencies, and actually approved a lot of different innovative financing approaches, including this sort of financing, where there's not the funding in the federal government often to just fund a new facility, new buildings in particular. And so, they use innovative financing approaches like this. I think that the lease revenue bond approach that you supported a few weeks ago is a very well-used approach, and for money that you need to be able to finance, that you are doing the right thing to go ahead and do that. And just want to add that perspective. So, thank you for your support, and look forward to seeing new library built here before long.
Thank you. Ellen Wright, followed by Alice Cutrell.
I just wanted to say a very big thank you for what you did tonight on behalf of the library. Thank you, Mayor Frazier and the council. I think it's wonderful for our community for several reasons. One that wasn't mentioned yet is the equality you bring to our community by building this facility, so that, for example, families that cannot afford technology will have equal access to it at all times. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you. And last card in public comment is Alice Cutrell.
Alice Cutrell, I live in Amesport Landing, right by the library, and I'm just here to support the library and thank you for everything you're already doing. I just think that the library is so much more than a place to check out books, and I can see it in our library. I see how well-used it is, and I just think we need more of the same. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, everyone. We will move.
I have a card.
On item number five, I've got.
I was, I was going to do it during public comment.
Okay. I will switch your card then. I'll switch your card, yeah.
I also just wanted to thank all of you on behalf of the Friends of the Library and on behalf of the 2016 Capitol Campaign for the Library for the move you made earlier to put some more funding aside. I also wanted to thank you for having a project manager ready to be chosen for tonight. I think that's a really exciting step in this process. It moves us just one step closer to actually seeing this library come together. But also, I want to thank you on behalf of the community, because when we did the outreach last year, we had over 20 meetings. We met with over 2,000 people on the coast, from Pescadero all the way up to Montero. We went to the schools. We were out in front of the Mercado. We were in front of New Leaf and Safeway. We really worked very hard to make sure that the community could be a part of this effort. And so, I want to thank you on their behalf because I think that their wishes are being represented. But all that input got us to this point of a conceptual design. And I am so excited that that conceptual is now going to be taken by a project manager and start to be molded into something a little more concrete. And then we'll move on to getting an actual architect to come up with the architectural designs. And I hope we're still on track to break ground in 2016 in the summer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We move now to the consent calendar. Councilmembers, do you have any items to pull, or may I have a motion?
I will move the consent calendar, items one through four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
I.
Yes. I.
I. Thank you. That all passes. We move now to staff reports. Item number five, award a consultant services contract to Griffin Structures, Inc. for project and construction management services for the Half Moon Bay Library Project in the amount not to exceed $740,880. And we will have that report from Dante?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Over the last several months, we have worked with the Library JPA and the County Manager's Office to really refine the process of actually building the library. A technical advisory committee was developed. And one of the most important steps that they took was to develop a process to get a quality project manager and construction manager onboard as soon as possible. So, the RFP was released in March. It came in on April 3rd. And tonight, we're going to be recommending a contract award to Griffin Structures for tonight. John Doughty, who is the Senior Management Analyst for the Community Development Department, has done a lot of work in this area, and I'd like to turn it over to him now to kind of walk you through the recommendation tonight.
Thank you, Dante. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers and community. Again, my name is John Doughty. I'm with the Community Development Department. As has been discussed a little bit tonight, on February 3rd, this council authorized staff to proceed toward development of a new library for Half Moon Bay. And that included discussion and putting forth to the Capitol Improvement Plan and Program additional monies. And you, again, tonight recommended additional dollars toward that. So, huge effort, and thank you. Since February, staff has been working with our funding partners to identify next steps and critical paths. One of those critical paths is the hiring of a project manager slash construction manager, and in essence, a firm that can handle both of those aspects. As indicated in the staff report, it's critical to have As indicated in the staff report, it's critical to have a firm with a strong design background, a firm with a strong construction background, and a firm what we believe is a strong understanding of, one, the project itself in terms of having experience with public libraries in particular, but also able to bridge between the design and, and methods and means and materials to ensure that it is developed and designed and ultimately delivered effectively and efficiently and in budget. The project manager will play a major role in the solicitation and selection of the right architect for this project, and as indicated, I think, by one of the, the members of the community, that selection of the architect is really foundational to the project and moving forward, again, to a project that is both cost-effective and developed on schedule. And cost-effective means also within the context of the actual design and construction materials, but also in long-term operations and maintenance, as that is a significant obligation that the city will inherit throughout the years for the new library. So it's a big issue. I would note that the conceptual budget for the library that was developed by Group Four included a line item for project and construction management. So this is something that was anticipated, and clearly part of that original conceptual budget that was presented to the City Council and the community earlier on. Griffin Structures submitted, they were one of four firms to submit proposals, from the requests for proposals that was issued by the city. Griffin Structures was interviewed by a panel consisting of our funding partners, the Library JPA, San Mateo County, and the city of Half Moon Bay. Griffin Structures, based on its overall proposal, team, and pertinent experience, was the unanimous selection of the interview panel. We believe, and I, I believe I speak for the rest of the panel, that Griffin assembled a team of seasoned professionals that will proactively and preemptively ensure delivery of the new library on schedule and on budget. As such, tonight, we are recommending that the City Council authorize and approve the resolution to authorize the city manager to enter, to contract with Griffin Structures, Inc., to provide construction and project management services for the new library in an amount not to exceed $745,310. I would note that with the arrangement that is developed, in which the county shares 50/50 with the cost of that, that the actual cost is only 50% of that total cost to the city. And I'd also note that those costs will be accrued over time as the project is developed, so that will not be a one-time payment of $745,310. It will be payments over time as the project proceeds down the path toward its ultimate development. Tonight, in attendance, we have members from the Griffin Structures group, including Roger Torero, Kelly Boyle, and Mark Schatz, and I'd also like to acknowledge in the audience our members of our partner staffs, including Matthew Chidester, Tom 14, and Annie Malley. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
And we also have Chris from Supervisor Horsley's office here, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. City Manager, is there anything else staff would like to add to that? All right. Council, any comments? Councilmember Penrose?
Yes. I'd like to preface my comments by saying that I think I've shown that I am for a new library. I have no problem with the new library. I am excited about it. I think it's a great thing for our community. In addition, I think I've only heard one person say that they didn't want a new library, and I've talked to lots and lots of people about it. Everybody I've talked to is excited that we're getting a new library. However, I feel that hiring a project manager at this stage in the game is a little premature. I would like to see more community discussion to include another alternative to the two that were presented to the public a year or so ago, when the 22 million and the 33 million or 22,000 square feet and 33,000 square feet, sorry, libraries were proposed. I would like to see the community be able to have some input on discussing something not quite that large. I'm not saying we shouldn't have a large library, but I know there are a lot of people in our community who feel it's outsized for us, that it's a much larger scope than we need. Because the county is giving us money, that doesn't make it a good reason to spend money. It's a good reason to spend money to get a new library. It's not necessarily a good reason to come up with matching funds, because that's what the county says, that's what they want to spend. So I would propose that we have some venue where the community who feels that the scope is too grand, get a chance to put forth their feelings. That's, that's the first thing. The second thing is, I, I would like to question the $750,000 to pay a project manager. I don't know enough about what project managers cost, but that seems like a lot of money to me.
Thank you, Councilmember Penrose. I can answer some of these comments here, since I am quite involved in it, and I know you're new to this. For the last year and a half, we went out through the community. So the community has been surveyed, and, and it wasn't just Half Moon Bay people, because this is truly a library for the coast side, and over 2,000 people gave, gave their input on this. So the part of the project manager is to scope to find what we can do on that acre. Now, yes, the public said they wanted to do a lot of things, and that came out to 33,000 square feet, and council brought it back down to 25,000 square feet. When the project manager goes through it, they'll be able to go through line item by line item, they'll be able to, and I should let them speak about it, really talk about what can be put on that, that one acre to meet the needs of the community. And you mentioned the, the $758,000. We're not paying that. We're contributing $300,000, and the county match, let me explain that to you, whether this was 100 million or 5 million, the county is investing in this for unincorporated areas. So we've got our investment as Half Moon Bay, and from Montero, Moss Beach, El Granada, to south, San Gregorio, Pescadero, right to the Santa Cruz line, as long as it's San Mateo County, that is the county's commitment. This was when he was Assemblyman Rich Gordon, when he was a supervisor. He had put that in as a one-time, because the county actually paid for that library 45 years ago. And I know I mentioned it before. Picture the library that was there before that, really small. It was less than a fourth of this room, and people who sat here had the vision to build a library for 45 years. So this isn't just for next year or not. So we'll get the answers when we've got the project manager onboard to really drill down. At least they've got something to work with.
Yeah, I, I think it, I think you maybe misunderstood what I said. If the county is willing to put up $100 million to build 16 libraries on the coast, that's not a good reason for us to put up $16 million. We have to decide how much money we want to spend on a library, but before we even do that, I think the community at large needs to be able to talk about what other options than the ones they were surveyed about. The, the survey showed them a huge library. It didn't say, the survey didn't ask them, "How big would you like the library to be?" And the community has questions about that.
I'll correct you on that. Nobody went out and said, "Do you want this?" It was, "What services do you need?" And that's when you got people who had small children, they wanted preschool areas. We went to the high school, we, we had forums over at, at Cunha. "What do you need? What can you do?" Scaled that down a little bit, but nobody put out a big giant thing in front of them and said, "Do you like that?" It came up organically.
There was no, no plan for a library shown to the public and asked if they liked it?
No. We had materials...
I saw plans. I saw conceptual plans for a library.
And that's what you see now. It's a conceptual plan, but that didn't start. That was an output of surveys and information from these folks.
I get it. What I'm saying to you is that there is a large group of people in our community who have a problem with the size of the library. And I think they...
I understand that.
They should have a chance to speak to that issue. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying we shouldn't build a 22,000-square-foot library. What I'm saying is the community needs to be heard.
The community's been talking about this, as Councilmember Ruddock knows, for 14 years, wanting to build this.
I understand that.
And, and got a chance to weigh in on it. And you're going to have, I mean, no matter what we do, there's going to be people that don't want things. But hiring the project manager right now is the step to see the scope that it can be.
So I've heard some of the same things, and I appreciate your comments. The, you know, one comment I heard is, "Should we have a fireplace in our library?" Like the concept says. I like the idea, others don't like that idea. There's also a question about, there's an estimate for the per-square-footage cost of the library. All of those things have to get defined, scoped, and, and nailed down. Group Four, the architects we utilized, led a tremendous public outreach, and we did not start with the conceptual ideas. We started with, "What do you need? What are your, what are your, what's your vision?" And the output of that, the result of that, plus a calculation, they, they've built libraries all over the country, and the calculation for a community of our size was a 33,000-square-foot library. That's what the math said. And it came to council, we said, "I understand, that's what the math says," but, and there was, the library had different bays, and we pulled a full bay out of the library, I think reducing it by roughly 8,000 square feet, with the belief that that was the, you know, more appropriately sized for this community. But the history of this project did not start at the November election or in January, it started a decade ago, 14 years ago. Now, am I correct that we're hiring, if we hire this project manager, this is a three-plus-year initiative, right? How, I don't know the exact timeline for the, if we break ground next year, that's a year away, then it's, then another 18 months, two years, so it's roughly three years for, for this cost. It's, it's not just project management, it's managing the construction. I'm assuming from initiation at this point to finalize scope, to come up with architectural drawings, to lead the bidding process, to manage the placement of a temporary library structure, to, and figure all that out, and to manage the construction process through ribbon cutting. Is that correct?
That is correct, and if I can just insert one, one thing. One of the things we thought was important was to get a project manager and construction manager who was adept at building libraries. This company, or this firm, has built several libraries. They understand the kind of community landscape. On page 339 of your packet, part of the duty of, of the firm, the project manager and construction manager, is public outreach. And I think that gets a little bit to what Councilwoman Penrose was talking about, at really understanding kind of the needs of the partners, but also working with the community to try to figure out the whole scope and context of, of the project. So that page contains some of the additional details for the public outreach section.
Got it. So there, so between now and the time we stick a shovel in the ground with, with our construction hats and take photos next year, there is opportunity for public input. There is no way I'm going to support stopping this project and say, "What else should we do?" That was done here before. How many people have visited the Boys and Girls Club at Bev Cunha Road? Nobody, because it never got built. It never happened, because we optimized and optimized, and let's, let's move it into another project. Let's, 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 let's refine it, let's find a better way to deal with it. And circumstances change, it never got built. There is widespread community support for a new library, and there's also opportunity for input. If some individuals in our community feel strongly that it's the wrong size, I want to hear from them. It, it behooves us to hear from them, we should hear from them, and we have an outreach process, and we have a construction manager, we should listen to that. Then it could be the policy of the council to, to potentially make some refinements, but there is no way I'm going to support stopping this project, because if we stop it, it's not a six-month delay, it derails, and we've got to start again, and there's too much demand in the community. Our community deserves this.
Yes, and what I'm asking for is that the community get a chance to speak. That's what I ask for, and if there is room for that, then I'm okay.
And that is all part of hiring the project manager.
That's fine.
Let's hear, let's hear some of the people. Councilmember Ruddock, or, I'm sorry.
So I agree with Dr. Penrose that we need to have a conversation about getting a library that's half the cost, and that is a scale appropriate to the neighborhood and a design appropriate to the neighborhood. I understand a lot of outreach has been done about the library, but the process, as far as I can tell, was been to develop a wish list based on everybody's ideals of what a great library would be. And, and the concept we have is the sum total of, of a lot of wishes for a lot of different components, but I think it still lacks the overlay of appropriate cost, scale, and design. And I'm hoping that this project manager can help us with this conversation. I'm hoping I hear that, otherwise, you know, maybe we need to step back and do what Dr. Penrose is saying. But I noticed, looking at the proposal, that, so the proposal from Griffin included a lot of reference projects. Here's, here's work we've done before, and I've noticed that there are some very nice projects that are about the same size that are half the cost, and it's in the firm's own documentation, and you can go and look, and it's Buildings in Almudon, Millbrae, and Belmont. So essentially, right now, we are proposing to spend twice as much as communities in our own neighborhood on this building. So that raises red flags for me right there. So, you know, if, if we can hire a project manager, I noticed that part of the task was what they call value engineering, you know, finding a way to reduce costs. Well, as a council member, I believe part of my duty is to do value governance, and that is to make sure that we're always fine-tuning, taking in more information, and getting, you know, input from the public. So I understand a lot of outreach was done, but I don't think we've done the second piece, which is to put another overlay in terms of a discussion on money, scope, and scale. Frankly, I, I looked at it and I was astonished at the concept. I really don't think it's appropriate for that neighborhood, but in any case, I'm willing to move ahead if, you know, you can guarantee me that we are going to have more conversations about cost, scale, and design that fits in with that neighborhood. I understand the county has its own big vision, but, you know, we're going to be paying for the maintenance of this. It's three times the size of the library we have now, and we have a lot of other demands on a very limited tax base. So I think we need to continue to be careful and not go willy-nilly off on some grandiose vision that's not appropriate for our community. So these are my thoughts. So I share your concerns, I see where a consultant might help us. I am troubled by the cost. As I pointed out, you know, the $745,000 price tag is almost, you know, 20% of our... is almost, you know, 20% of our cash balance on hand in our general fund. And I acknowledge the county's paying half of that, $745, but it still seems like a lot. So, you know, I, I want to squeeze this contract until it screams and, and, you know, works for our community. Because I, I share Deborah's concerns. And frankly, I've heard more concerns about the conceptual library than I've heard support to date. And I heard it on the campaign trail, and I've heard it since. So certainly, there's, there's, there's a voice in the community that hasn't been heard yet. And, and we're not unanimous on the council. So I think we need a, you know, a carefully calibrated process moving forward in terms of, you know, getting us the new library. And I agree with Deborah. People would like a new and improved library. But they're shocked at the cost. They're shocked at the use of lease revenue bonds. They're shocked at not being asked to pay for it through a GEO bond. And they're, they're awestruck by the design. So, again, I think we need to be very careful here. And while I'd like to be a cheerleader for a new library, as you might have guessed, I'm somewhat of a fiscal conservative. I wanna make sure we're spending other people's money wisely and doing right by the neighborhood.
Yeah. So I, I can understand your comments, and I appreciate them, but I totally disagree respectfully. I think when you're talking about the future, the future is today. There's not one of us that can remodel a kitchen or buy a house or improve our property that we didn't wish to do it better and make it for the future. Recently, I had the Estuary Institute present at the Regional Water Board. They're talking 6 million more people in the Bay Area here in the next 20 years. So do we wanna build a, a little Baraka? Or do we wanna build something for the future? You cannot build for the past. We have to build for the future. We're not building a Taj Mahal. We're gonna build something that's respectable. And the thing that sticks in my mind constantly, we're talking five houses, maybe. Five houses on, somewhere on the coast side that would cost, in the end, what we're looking at. So I think that's very important to consider that. And when the county steps up to offer share, cost sharing, they don't do this very often. I don't think it happens at all. It's a very, very special opportunity for us to share the cost with the county. Because I stated earlier this evening, we're getting the whole coast side included in our community of Half Moon Bay City. So we are taking care of whatever we can. So I think this is a rare opportunity where the county will step up. They're not giving us $100 million. They're giving us $10 million that will go towards this. But I think you have to build for the future. You can't build for the past. We've seen past actions cost the city money. So I think we have to be prepared to do it properly. When you're talking outreach, farmers' markets, streets, new leaf, there has been outreach. You're not gonna be able to contact everybody. It just doesn't happen. You have a group of individuals now that are saying, "Whatever." But I still think a majority of the people of the city of Half Moon Bay are willing to step up and support the proper moving forward. And this firm, if you look at this firm, and you're talking about construction, construction costs, we've talked about it already. The past is different. Construction costs in the Bay Area, you can't even get a carpenter to come to work now because everyone is so busy with Silicon Valley. And that's where costs are rising. And the longer you delay a project like this, the more money it's gonna cost, in my opinion. So I, I am continuing, I looked at this firm, well-respected, constantly looking to do the best job for every client they've handled over the years. So I don't see a reason why we could not support a firm of this caliber to move forward, to bring this community together, to build for the future and not the past.
So, a question, and then I'd like to make a motion. Oh, my goodness. Sorry. Whoa. Sorry. Got ahead of myself. Dante, I think if you anticipated, my question is, there was two comments, or comments from, from respective Debras about value engineering and opportunity for the project manager to look at driving down the costs. And I agree with that principle. And I think we should have that opportunity. It should be inclusive of this contract. And I believe it is. And also, those refinements and scope are part of that. And what we ultimately should have in getting, having the opportunity for input that the conceptual design is not the foregone conclusion, but that there are some refinements that can happen through this process. Could you address that, please?
Yes. And I'd like actually John Doughty, who's been working closely with Griffin, to actually address those, those comments.
Thank you. Part and parcel to the project manager role and responsibility clearly is to evaluate the conceptual plan and to look more realistically at that plan. And I think that the agreement among all parties is that we need to look at every aspect of that project, including the height, the bulk, the scale, the design, again, back to the issues of long-term maintenance and, and the surrounding community in this surrounding area, and look at that. Clearly, that is part of their scope and their responsibilities. That's why they brought on Mark Schatz, who's, who was the architect for the Belmont and the Millbrae Libraries, which all note were built in 2004, 2006, when prices were a bit different. And that's over 10 years, almost 10 years ago. So I think all of us would like to be able to build anything at what it was in 2006. But that's why we brought, and that's why they brought them on, and that's why we, as a group, recommended that. Because we have an architect who can oversee the architect, who can basically call a spade a spade if, if they think that the architect is really pushing wrongly. And then also to look at, again, methods, materials, and look at how we can improve the value for the dollar that we have available. So no one is going in this with the idea that we have X amount of dollars we're trying, or an X amount of square feet. We're looking at it, to some extent, based on the conceptual plans as a starting point, but with frankly, all things on the table.
Thank you, John. We have several cards here from speakers, and perhaps we may have Griffin to talk to if we need to. So the first will be Doreen, followed by Frank Garrity. We'll call you the Silver Avenue Gang.
Yes. And I got called first this time. So anyways, my name is Doreen Garrity, and I am a member of Advocates for Open Government. And just for your information, I have not been surveyed about this library. And everyone I have talked to, they have not been surveyed either, just for your information. Anyways, I'm here tonight because I am concerned about the per-square-foot cost for the library. The cost of the library is over $900 per square foot. That's an outrageous dollar amount for just a library. The senior center was built with furnishings for only $183 per square foot. General construction cost is anywhere from $125 to $150 per square foot. So I'm concerned, where is this $900 per square foot coming from? Now, I'm not against a library. I don't know of anybody who's against the library. But I am against this plan that is gonna cost us $900 per square foot. Why do we need a $24,000-square-foot library? It appears this library has 10,000 square feet of space, 10,000 square feet space of meeting rooms. Why do we need that much meeting rooms? The service area for this library is $26,000, 26,000 residents. And according to the Anderson-Brute Architects, who are the architects for the city of Pacifica, they suggest a size-population ratio of .6 square feet per person, which would suggest a library to be about 15,600 square feet, not a 25 or 24,000-square-foot library. The current library size is 7,825 square feet. So if you keep the current library where it is now, and you expand the library onto the grassy field behind the library, to, behind and to the east, and you can build, that area's about 7,000 square feet large. So if you build in addition 7,000 square feet there, in addition to the 78, 25 square feet, you will be, you'll have a library, almost 15,000 square feet, which is basically the ratio that the architects in Pacifica suggest that you should have. And also, this would cost approximately 1.3 million. Now, it could go up even more, but it's certainly not going to be the outrageous dollar amount that you have now. Plus, this idea, you would have less disruption to the library. You wouldn't have to tear the existing library down. You wouldn't have to find a place to, for the next couple of years during construction, to store the books and to have the library. And anyway, so I'm really hoping that, and also, it would cost a lot less money. And I believe the Friends of our Library have raised a lot of money. So if you would please consider this option, and please do not contract an award, do not award a contract for the project manager tonight. I believe this can be done in the community without friction, and we can work together. I'm just asking you to pause and get some better ideas from other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Garrity. Followed by Pam Fisher.
Hi. Frank Garrity, Silver Avenue, representing AFOG, because this is an open government issue where so many of us have not been surveyed. And, and so many of us voted against the ballot issue last November, yet here it is going forward. And we did not vote against the library. We voted against the many taxes to pay for it. Anyway, first, I wanna compliment and thank the Friends of the Library for their hard and good work over the years. There's no doubt that we do need to upgrade and expand our library. Tonight, however, I ask the council to slow down, step back, and delay the hiring of the project manager while we reevaluate the size and scope and cost of this project. The drawings we've seen, the building is beautiful and spectacular, but the size of 25,000 square feet and height of 30 feet is too large, does not fit the character of Half Moon Bay and the neighborhood. And the cost is outrageous. You keep hearing about cost per square foot. I am concerned about cost per person. Roughly $24 million divided by roughly 24,000 people is $1,000 per person. That's not per household. That's per person. A mom and dad and two kids will pay $4,000 for this library. And that's before all the interest that's accrued on the bonds that you were about to issue. So please, slow this down, reevaluate the size, scale it to the community, scale it to our budget. I'm gonna use up some of my minutes to read a letter from someone who could not make it tonight. His name is Gus Peterson. He's an AFOG member in Moss Beach. He says, "I'm sorry I cannot make it to the meeting tonight, but I am required to be at another city's city council meeting for whom I am a consulting engineer. I am very concerned about the gross amount of spending being approved by the city council lately. Apparently, there are no projects worth saying no to, even when the voters reject them outright. The company I work for is very competitive in our industry, fee-wise, and $745,000 is an extremely high-dollar figure for any project. I remember a $900-million project that I oversaw for the government, which had two project managers for three years. That fee was $900,000, or 1/1,000 of the value of the project. I shouldn't have to point out to you that 1/1,000 of $23 million is only about $23,000, which seems a much more reasonable sum for project manager. Why not be more physically conservative? Spend our money more wisely? After all, up in Moss Beach, we only have the bookmobile rarely. With money already in the coffers of the Friends of the Library, a sizable expansion of the existing building, which I remember from my childhood, and my family still visits quite happily, could be built without the need to cost taxpayers more than $20 million. Please, do as your constituents and the voters have asked, and stop spending our money. Gus Peterson, Moss Beach." And a couple of sentences from another person that wrote a letter, wanted us to read, that also couldn't make it. This is Fran up in El Granada, who says, "Those numbers are outrageous. If the county's putting in half or a portion, then I think most in the unincorporated midcoast would prefer a branch library in our own area. Years ago, we had a branch in El Granada. The county could restore one of those units back to, into a library for a lot less money. Half Moon Bay could double the current size of the building for a lot less. Would also eliminate many more car trips down to Half Moon Bay on the highway." Final sentence, just Fran asked, "How do you justify burdening-"
And do you wanna wrap up now, Mr. Garrity? The buzzer has gone.
How do you justify burdening us with expensive bonds after a large majority voted against a huge building? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam Fisher, followed by Judy Macias.
Pam Fisher, Half Moon Bay. John, if you can find someone to buy my house for $5 million, I'll move and stop bugging you guys. Five houses, $5 million, $25 million? I don't know. Anyway, I do agree with Dr. Penrose and Deborah Riddick. We're asking that you not hire a project manager tonight. Give us a month. I was never polled. And as aware of, as aware as I am of what's going on in the community, I don't wake up on the weekends early enough to make it to the farmer's market. I have no kids at Cunha. I have no kids at the high school. Did you have a public workshop as a city council? That's the piece. You did. When did you have, well, I don't know. If you did have it, great. I don't know how long ago it was, but it certainly wasn't in recent history. At any, what I would consider recent, when, when we all woke up with, "This is what your plan was." 900 square feet, we understand where it comes from, but it is outrageous. Again, it is the scale and scope of the project. Are we going to be losing this as meeting space? Will this be taken over by Boys and Girls Club? We know they do need a home. This is something that many of us feel we, we could abide by. But we feel that there are things that we're not being told. And again, of course, building for the future. However, rounding up, we don't see the population increasing, even with the figures that, that we've been given. It's 25,000 to 29,000 maximum. We, I really believe you're putting the cart before the horse by, by paying for a project manager tonight, unless this whole project can be reexamined. I'm not sure whether this went out to bid for these, for these contractors. And I understand, this is not widgets. These, this is library development, and it's a public library as opposed to a school library, which have, which has very different needs. At any rate, again, we are just saying, "Give us a month. Hold another workshop. Let us see the floor plans." I haven't seen the floor plans. I saw a fly-through. And it certainly doesn't give us a very good idea about what it is that we would be paying for. So unless the project truly is not in stone, please, don't hire a project manager tonight. Give us a month. Hold another workshop, and you will probably be able to settle, settle most people's minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Macias, followed by Janice Maxwell.
Good evening. I am here to be a cheerleader for the library, and to say that I've been a library patron since the sixties, and a member of Friends of the Library, and a member of the Village of the Coast Side. And we, I am happy to support a project manager, while I appreciate some of the objectives. I've been waiting such a long, long time. I don't want to wait any, any longer. I remember when the library was built in about nineteen seventy-two, and it seemed like just the end-all and be-all. We were so happy to be there with our children and to have room and to be out of that little tiny room we had before. But our community's changed since nineteen seventy-two. Our population has at least tripled, you probably know better than I do. And when we had an El Granada library, you could actually get on the road and get there, there wasn't so much traffic for us to get to that El Granada library. And the needs of the community have changed, and the community has changed. We're much larger, we're more diverse, we're much more affluent, we're more educated, and as Farmer John said, we need to prepare for the future. We just, the room is inadequate. We do need meeting space. We used to have a wonderful community room at the library, but the needs of the library grew, so the community room had to disappear. And there are very, very few meeting spaces in this community, and there are no free meeting spaces in the community, or on the North Coast. So all the residents of the North Coast will be able to use the space at the library, it'll be very, very important to us. So I say, let's get moving, we have the momentum now, and we don't want to wait any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Maxwell, followed by Paulette Eisen.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Janice Maxwell, I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. I agree with many of the people that have already spoken against going ahead right at this time for the library. Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Penrose and Riddick. I'm kind of nervous, the first time I've ever spoken at one of these tonight, so I apologize. I sent an email earlier this evening, and it probably wasn't received yet, or at least looked at, and as I was looking it over, I noticed I needed several changes made. And in light of the things that have been said already, I would just like to add to what's been said, that the design, the expense, the size, and mostly the cost, the paying back of that expense of these loans, and maintaining it afterwards, are huge. We are now being bombarded with many enormous proposals and active projects, here in Half Moon Bay and along the coast. And I'm afraid the writing could be on the wall, that we could be heading towards another bankruptcy if we keep spending and spending and spending. Now, maybe there's a lot more money than I ever expected, but whatever. And I don't want this council to be the second infamous Half Moon Bay City Council that goes down in history, leading us in that direction. Tourists come here to get away from it all. And I'm afraid with this design, that we're going to lose our quaint little town that we have, and the town that I moved to twenty-two years ago. And I don't want to see that go away. So please, take your time in making this decision. I, too, was not one of the ones that was able to participate in the want list in the two thousand, I believe, that were polled, out of twenty-six thousand residents, or whatever, on this side of the bay, or coast, so, this side of the hill. Anyway, I appreciate you listening, thank you.
Thank you. Paulette Eisen, followed by John Ullm.
Thank you, Mayor Fraser. You know, Mayor Fraser, I know it's a little bit hard to talk about this library project with you, because it is such a pet project of yours, you're part of Friends of the Library, it's a little bit difficult to be objective about it. I have finally joined the chorus, in that I think we do need an improved library, even though I've honestly totally enjoyed our library as is. The only problem I have with it is frankly, the flooring. And whenever I'm in there, which is quite often, I go to the library about two, three times a week, and I guess maybe it's just the times that I go there, I never find it, I find about fifteen people in the library, I find two people sitting at the computer. I mean, I do not find it overcrowded. So, you know, this whole thing with the library has me really surprised. I mean, my build, my home is older than the library, and I would never think about just tearing it down. If I wanted more room, the first thing I would be considering is renovating and adding on to it, not just raising it to the ground, because I'd like it bigger and better. I'm glad that we're in a much healthier financial situation, but I always urge caution in spending. I think that it is good to hold off on this project manager for a bit. I actually was one of the people surveyed, I went to the farmer's market, Rick Walczek and Alan Alafano said, "Look at this new library we're looking at." I said, "Are you kidding me? This is way too big and way too much for this town." Because it looked exactly like the library that was, that had been built in Walnut Creek, which I had just left a year and a half ago at that point. And that, you know, was for sixty thousand people, to serve a town of sixty thousand people. So I thought that it was off-scale then, but I need, what I really want is to know that these three council members, who I know, you've, obviously, you've been working on this for a long time. You know, you made it so clear, a month after month, that if Measure O doesn't pass, there is no new library. And I thought, it was, it was done, you know, you all like just hammered that home. And I actually voted for Measure O, but we didn't end up with the majority, and I thought it was a dead issue until that night, when I felt things went out of control, and suddenly we're on the push for not only the new library, but at the scale that just people's desire about what they wanted, rather than a real, true coming-together of the community. The other question I have for you, two things, one is, are we, as a taxpayer here in Half Moon Bay, paying for this twice? Do we pay for it through the county, and then also through our funds from Half Moon Bay? I don't have clarity on that, and I'd like to know if we're getting double-dipped. And the final question is, what is the future of libraries? You know, most people are taking out books through Amazon, or through, or through online lending libraries. What is the actual future of libraries, and what do we really need? Thanks.
Thank you, Paulette. John Ullm, followed by Al Alafano.
John Ullm, thanks for having me up. First of all, I love libraries. One of my fondest memories is settling a bar bet when I was sitting in northern Wisconsin at ten in the evening, called a reference librarian in Honolulu. And it had something to do with the number of punts that Vikings did in a football game. But I won the bet. Any rate, you can just look it up in Google now, get the same answer. I just got a, just kind of random list of things that I discovered. I called down to San Jose, spoke to a person there who was in charge of their library projects. She's been part of like seven. Lisa, I can't remember her last name. Any rate, according to her, some things we might want to know is, they're about halfway through a project right now, about sixteen thousand square foot project, and they're building it at about five hundred and thirty-five to five hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. And she says they're right on budget, things are going the way they should. She mentioned that some things, lessons they've learned, that she has learned while building libraries. First, they avoid building on two floors. There's several reasons for that. One is that you need two elevators, she says, because one of them's always broke. And in my experience, as industrial painters, one of them is always broke. And that takes, shuts down your library as far as moving books up and down. The other thing she says, when you have two floors, you need a lot more staff. Because if you have two floors, there will be people sleeping in your library, and there will be kids making out in your library. So you're going to have to make sure that you monitor all that. Well, it makes more kids, but, let's see what else we got here. Oh, and then something I haven't really heard discussed, what is our current library worth? You know, the one we have? That building's got to be worth millions of dollars. We just poured like a half million into the new bathrooms to make them up to ADA compliance, which is great. But we're basically throwing that money away. We might be able to salvage some bricks, but you're throwing away, I would guess, five, ten million dollars, when you tear that library down, cart it out, and start from scratch. So is this really the best way to spend the resources? I know your goals are noble. You want to give our kids as many opportunities, you want to give adults opportunities to relearn education, you want to give people opportunities to learn to read. But we have a building over there right now, the ELC, that thing's empty. All the time, it's empty. We have very few things going on at the ELC. It's got a great internet fiber optic cable going to it, bring great broadband down there. You've got bathrooms there, you've got space that you could set up so people could use it. So there's a lot of other options to consider, in my opinion. We seem to be fighting over, we're going to build a new one, no matter what, we're going to tear down what we got, we're going to build a new one. I don't know if there's anything we can do to stop that. As far as the project manager goes, I don't, I think you should hire it tonight. I really don't have an opinion, I'm not with any group, I don't have, share the opinions of AFOG on this. Hire the guy, I don't care. I find it interesting that you're using a project manager to help us scope out the project that we want. I would usually think that goes the other way around, but maybe that can be explained. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Al Alafano, and final card from Wendy Shaffir.
I think not. That was the final card, didn't you say?
Jules, did we miss you here?
I think so.
All right, I'll let you come up after Alan, I'm sorry you've had to wait. I must have put another stack.
Good evening. Mayor Fraser and council members and staff, I think a couple of things are very clear tonight. And the first thing is that you're all in favor of a new library. Nobody's arguing against a library, that's number one. Number two, even though there's been tremendous public input already, I mean, I spend days over at New Leaf, in front of New Leaf, talking to people, farmer's market, talked to Paulette over there, there's been a huge amount of public input, but it doesn't mean you have to stop now. I agree, you can still continue to listen to the public. But at the end of the day, it's your project, it's your final decision. I think the critical thing is that you say to the public, yes, we want the library, we don't want to overspend, we want to do the right thing, but keep in mind, this library's been there for forty-five years, so there's a good chance, whatever you decide on, we'll probably be there for another thirty, forty, fifty years. So it does make sense to build this, to last our community, to handle the kids of today and many generations to come from. I think that's one of the things you can do, when you design a library, you make it able to handle new things. I don't think the library forty-five years ago was designed for computers. What are the needs going to be twenty, thirty years from now? I don't know exactly, but if you design it to have enough flexibility, you can adapt your library to whatever the needs are down the road. The financing, I think we've pretty much agreed, is really coming together. The Friends of the Library have really working hard to try and raise two million dollars. At the end of the day, the city's piece of this pie is going to be very small compared to what we thought it was going to be months ago. And I have to tell you, I commend you going with a simple loan, call it lease bonds, whatever you want to call it, as opposed to geo-bonds. I, or the other people in town, don't want more things added to our property tax. And once you put it on the property tax roll, it stays there till it's paid off. There's no impetus for you all to pay it off sooner, because it's out of sight, out of mind. But by taking this several million dollars in a small-city loan, it motivates you all and the city to pay that loan off as soon as you can. And remember, what happens in two thousand and nineteen, the city picks up a million dollars a year. So whatever it is you end up having to borrow, that small amount, two, three, four, five million, you can knock that off very quickly, once that million dollars a year hits the two thousand and nineteen budget. So at the end of the day, yes, listen to the public more, get a property, get a property manager on board, and move this forward. But like I said, at the end of this, the design, the size, all of that, that's going to be your decision. And that's fine, that's why you were elected to sit here and make that decision. So please, move this forward and continue to do the job the community wants, which is a new library. Thank you.
Thank you. Jules Sofr.
Good evening, members of the council. As I spoke to you earlier on, during the budget, I am concerned about two things here. By the way, I like the idea of a bigger and better library, I think the community does need it. However, I have reservations about a number of things. The two things I wanted to speak to you about were ongoing operating costs. I can't seem to get any kind of an idea what they're going to be. And as I talked to you this afternoon, none of you seem to realize that you couldn't go to the library on Thursday morning, because we're not paying them any money to be open on Thursday morning. So here, we've got a library that's sitting there one morning a week, closed, and it's because of us, it's not because of the county. So I think the first thing to do is to get the current library open on Thursdays. And I think the Friends of the Library should be pushing hard for that. That's my first point. Second point, what is it going to cost in maintenance costs, ongoing costs, once this new library is built? Does anybody have any idea? Have we scoped that out yet? Because we should, if we haven't. I haven't heard anything, and I looked at your, what you were passing out to the public, and I didn't see anything about what those costs were going to be. I sure would like to know, because it's going to be an expense we're all going to be saddled with in the future. Then lastly, parking. Now, we're building this great big gymnasium over here, but we're not adding one parking space for the town because of it. There are people that are going to use that gymnasium, and they're going to want to park their cars. We're building this new library, there are going to be people who want to park. We're not adding one new parking space. Now, as a private businessman, if I could do that, I don't think you guys would let me. I wouldn't be able to build these two big buildings as a private businessman and not provide the city with any parking. You guys can do it, because you're the city, but should you do it? That's the question you should be asking yourself. Should you do it? They're pretty close together, they're both big users, there's going to be people who want to park. I was over at the library at eleven o'clock, and the parking area was full. And I'll leave you with this one thought, and that is, seven-two-two Parisma, that's behind the library. Seven-thirty-eight and seven-forty, that's a combined house right next to seven-two-two Parisma. Those two lots have a great big empty space behind them, and there's nothing on it except the shed. There's a lot of parking available there. And an alternative to that would be parking underneath what you're going to build. Those are two thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sofr. And last card is from Wendy Shaffir.
Hi, I'm Wendy Shaffir. I live in Half Moon Bay, I'm also involved with the Friends of the Library, and I've also had some experience with large project management, of large infrastructure projects. And I'd like to thank, thank everybody for their support of the library tonight, that was really great. I'd also noted that there was a lot of misinformation that was shared before me, and I would just encourage people to get information from the Friends of the Library, library staff, city staff, to get the right facts. There's also a lot of really good points that were made. And I think that we, you're hearing over and over again, I think we all agree that cost containment is really important, and the cost for the library may be higher than they should be. A project management company, construction management company, is one of the best ways you have to get that kind of cost control. People might not be aware that the project manager, the reason that this works is because the project manager is independent of the construction company, they're independent of the architects and designers. They have that experience themselves, so they can oversee the process and help control costs. And I think you've also heard really loud and clear that people want more input, and you, you're going to be the boss of this contractor, so if you ask for more input, you can get more input, and I think that that would be important as well. Also, just to mention that the library that, the rough size that we're talking about now is right in line with the size per capita of other libraries on the peninsula, so it's not way bigger than it should be compared to others. I would encourage you to please hire the project manager as soon as possible, because as several people have mentioned, costs can only go up. And instruct the project manager to work on the scope, the amenities, the size, the design, get more input from the community, find out areas where costs can be controlled, and we can save as much money as we can and still get the library that we need and we deserve. And the only thing I'll say is- And the only thing I'll say is, put in a plug for, people talk about the North Coast side and putting in branch libraries and El Granada and so forth. The South Coast side is the most underserved area that we've got, and please keep in mind that you're also serving people down far, as far south as Pescadero and up in La Honda as well. So just my plug for the South Coast, and thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for all your comments on that. Can we hear from, do we need to?
If there are specific questions, we can definitely respond to those. But just one point, exactly the reasons that several speakers have mentioned, that's exactly the reason why it is important to get a project manager and a construction manager onboard as soon as possible, to help wade through that information, to help to get to what the project will be, the details of the project, materials, cost, size, all of that is something that can be handled and has in the past been handled by professional project and construction management.
Thank you for that. And I think, like we said, we have a lot of questions, and there's no doubt, and I'm not gonna apologize for carrying the torch of this on behalf of so many people for so long, and I definitely want to see cost containment. But we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it right, and it's gonna serve this community. Let's not shortchange ourselves. Let's build a library for our community that we deserve. So I think the best way to start that, to get, to find out, to really drill down what can be put on that tiny acre. What can we put on there is using the project manager to facilitate and go about and do their work. There's a lot of work that they'll do on this, and then we can really get down to the brass tacks of what goes in there and what doesn't. Because the difference of this is, a lot of people talk, $900 for a square foot, it's a lot. Yeah, it is. But if you were just building a gym or a shell or a gymnasium, that's a lot less. Remember, there's technology. So there's hard costs and there's soft costs, and that's what makes this unique. This is not just putting up an apartment building. So if you've heard from some of the public, and we'll hear more in the future, I'd like to entertain a motion now.
So, and before I may, I'm gonna make a motion. I want to acknowledge and appreciate the comments, both pro and let's stop. I appreciate all the comments. What I, my understanding is that the concerns of Councilmember Penrose and Councilmember Riddick are addressed within the scope of the contract to allow this council to set the policy for the scope of the project and for the project manager, management team to drive down, to work to drive down cost. And I'm comfortable with that, and I think that's the right next step. And with that, I move to award consultant services contract to Griffin Structures, Inc., for project and construction management services for the Half Moon Bay Library project in an amount not to exceed $745,880.
A motion's been made. May I have a second?
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please? Discussion from Councilmember Riddick.
I just want to say, I am going to vote for this, because I think I do agree on the value of having a good project manager. And you want to resolve as many, you know, issues upfront and spend your money on identifying and resolving those issues upfront, rather than having to throw money at it repeatedly, you know, at the back end. And I'm not just an analyst, I'm also a project manager in my job, and I know what it means to shape a project and cost contain and to adapt. And I will be watching this project very, very closely, and especially as to the degree of outreach and evaluation of, you know, alternatives, massaging it to make it right for the neighborhood and right for the dollars we have available, so.
Thank you. So Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Councilwoman Riddick said and restate what I said before. I am for a library, but I am for community involvement, even beyond what's been done, which was apparently a Herculean effort. And I commend every bit of that effort and the people that were involved in it. So I appreciate, I appreciate the discussion tonight, and I learned a lot about what project management might be able to do for us. And it sounds as if it's inclusive and it's going to be providing the community that has a problem with the current scope and design and cost a chance to be heard. And that's really all I want. So I am going to be voting for it as well.
Great, I appreciate the comments that have been made.
Yeah, and I think the key is, I personally don't want to go backwards. I think we're gonna be listening to the community. I think a project manager is professional enough to understand what we're moving forward, but I still stress, we have to build to the future. But we have to build to the future of, to the best of our ability financially and public input, but I'm not willing to move forward with a project that's gonna go backwards. Let's just say that. So I'm giving you upfront here, I will listen, and I will definitely support and participate in whatever the community comes back with, to the best of my ability. But I want everyone to know that I think we do need to build for the future, and we do need to respect all the viewpoints.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's discussion here, and I think this is an excellent firm. They have built these libraries that are close to us within the county, as well as so many in the Bay Area. So I think we're fortunate to have the team that selected them. I know the librarians are very excited about that, too. So we've got a first, we've got a second. Let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Griffin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kowalczek?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
Aye.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
Yes, and thank you, council. That passes 5-0. And thank you to our county partners who are here and the rest of you who stayed since past three, four hours with us on this. I really appreciate that. We'll move next now to one more item, and maybe we'll get home before 10:30 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This last item is an item that was requested from the City Council for staff to bring back. And this is the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee. The committee was established at the pleasure of City Council, and obviously, it can be amended, the process or the structure can be amended by City Council. The structure was established late last year, and the purpose at that time was for the Advisory Committee to serve in an advisory capacity to city staff and to council, to help evaluate project alternatives and design options, comment on the environmental, the adequacy, I should say, of the environmental document, and to provide recommendations to staff on ways to improve public education and outreach related to the impacts of the The composition of the committee was a 10-member committee that was made up of a cross-section of different people or people who were interested and had different levels of expertise. One member, we wanted to identify someone who operated a business within a downtown specific plan area. Three, or sorry, two at-large members. One member with interest in historic preservation, Chamber of Commerce member, environmental protection. And the current status is that we currently have received about 17 willing-to-serv forms or applications. We asked that, along with the willing-to-serv form, that the applicants also submit about 250 words explaining their skills and experience that have prepared them to serve on the committee. You have a list in your staff report of the applicants. As the process was set up, the next step in the process would be for a subcommittee of the City Council to evaluate the applications, to interview people, and then make recommendations to the full council. Again, this was established at your pleasure, and we await your direction for how to proceed.
I think council has a couple of questions, but I will say that I've been contacted by two councilmembers who are interested in the subcommittee, and I haven't talked to them about it, they had just sent information to me. So one of them was Councilmember Penrose and Vice Mayor Kowalczek, to be on a subcommittee for this. Is that correct, you still are both interested?
Yes.
So if council doesn't have any questions about that, and that would be acceptable. And Councilmember Riddick, do you have any comments?
I do. I'm very concerned about the characterization of this advisory body as being subject to the Political Reform Act, which I'm guessing means submitting Form 700s. And do the members of the General Plan Advisory Committee submit Form 700s?
Yes.
You mean, a one, a single-issue, short-term advisory committee needs to be subject to the Political Reform Act?
And maybe I'll let the city clerk respond to that.
Yeah, I'm not, and Reed can weigh in, too, but I'm not aware of a requirement, but when we set up the General Plan Advisory Committee, we did put in the bylaws that we wanted them to be subject to that and to file, and to do Form 700s. I think that was our discretion. I don't, I'm not aware of a requirement for a committee like that.
I don't see that this group will be making any material decisions affecting, you know, any financial interest. Certainly, there are people who want to be on the committee who are close to the bridge, but all they're gonna do is make some, you know, recommendations. Not all of them will be professional recommendations, just going to be citizens-at-large. I think it would be actually counterproductive by excluding certain kinds of talent that are, that are in the neighborhood. So if this is discretionary, I would say, remove the requirement to be subject to the Political Reform Act.
Yeah, as long as it's legal. I know a couple of the committees, through the years, they've added that to it, and I don't know what the definitive line is. If it's okay not to have it, Russell, can you give us some clue?
So to answer-
Reed, I'm sorry. John just told me Russell, and he wasn't right. Reed, Russell, what's the difference? Reed.
The Fair Political Practices Act prevents somebody from using their position as a government official, or in this case, you know, a committee member, to influence the decision-making process. And so that's a very soft inquiry that's very fact-dependent. I can take a lot closer look at this issue to determine whether we absolutely need to in order to protect that person's interests, because it really comes down to what happens to them if they don't have an FPPC statement filed. So we want to make sure that we're not exposing people who are generously giving their opportunity to work with the city, then have something come back and hurt them, because it was just something that was an oversight or something, we didn't necessarily cross the T and dot the I. But I'm happy to take a look at the issue and give you a more thorough-
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I certainly don't want individuals to be put in harm's way, but on the other hand, it just seems like it would exclude a lot of people who have spent a lot of time on the issue and have valuable information, historical or whatever, so I would just say, let's take another look at that.
And I'll prepare a legal memorandum for council on that issue.
Okay, great. So as long as, so we don't want it, but if we have to have it, we'll have it? Is that what we kind of agree it on? Yeah?
And I think if we have to have it, perhaps we'll ring it back. If not, we'll just, we'll start with the legal memo.
Okay, and I think that could influence, like, who gets on the committee. If there are individuals who clearly will not be able to participate in most of the decisions, it doesn't make sense for them to, you know, be selected for the committee. So probably an upfront memo would be advisable.
And we have seen that in some committees, where that's been required.
Yeah, I think also, with the city attorney, ensure for all of us that the distance, whether it's an impact financially on their business and things like that, I think we have to look at that very carefully.
There definitely could be issues depending on each individual person, so the memo that I can provide, and my understanding is you want me to come back and have this as an open discussion, not just sent to you as an email, but as further discussion-
How about, if it's okay, we don't have it, then it's set, but if we have to have it, I guess it has to be agendized?
Well, if we want to talk about it further, so you can give further direction on how the staff should proceed, we would need to agendize it. If you want to give us two options today and say, if you can find a legal basis that doesn't expose the citizenry to any type of action, we'd like to go that route. However, if not, we'll go with the FPPC filing. I can take that direction and still do the research, and we'll take a conclusion in-house, but we'll share it with you as well.
And probably in lieu of scheduling a full council meeting, maybe the subcommittee that's appointed could, you know, handle that?
Absolutely.
I always support more power. Thank you.
Yeah, and since I'm gonna be away for a month, is there a way we could get that information within the next day or two?
Unfortunately, I have an obligation to be at another board meeting tomorrow night, and there is an annual city attorneys conference in Monterey from Wednesday through Friday that I should be, should be attending all of it. I will be missing parts of it for board meetings. I'm not sure I could turn it around that quickly, but I could provide that work product via email if you are so inclined to check in from your house.
I certainly am.
Okay.
Yeah. Can we do the subcommittee?
I'll let the subcommittee work out whatever they need to work out. If it's all right with council, we will appoint Councilmember Penrose and Vice Mayor Kowalczek to the subcommittee, and you two work out logistics.
And I'm happy to serve as an alternate if for some reason, you know, the process lags you away, so.
Yeah.
Okay, is that all you need?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you all for staying with us. Did you guys vote on that? Do we need to vote?
Um, do we, we need to vote.
To confirm, I think we need a-
Um, do we have a motion?
To, yeah, to take the recommended act. So just a motion to take the recommended action.
It's just direction. So we have a motion to-
To proceed as per the original recommendation, pending any research that legal counsel needs to make.
I move to proceed as per the recommendation, per the staff report, reflecting the discussion here this evening.
Second. It's been moved and seconded.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or did I hear an aye? Okay, it's 5-0. Thank you. All right, thank you. Good night, everyone.
All right, great. So I will be available by email.